So, and then you saw the email between you and Gail. I had suggested 11:30 to break because your guys were having lunch. And then Gail says we can't be down there till the afternoon. So if you tell her 1 o'clock, then we're done. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that your guys got together. Because they're the ones doing the work. Thanks all.
First meeting of the month of August, first meeting of the City Council of August to order. And the first item on the agenda is our very changing agenda. Staff?
Now move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, staff. It's moving second to move forward with the agenda as presented. Any other comments, ready to vote on that? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or carries. Moving on to communications. This is the public comment section of the meeting. And this is for people that want to address the City Council on subjects. If you're here to speak to something that's already on the City Council meeting, wait until that point comes up on the agenda. But if you wish to address the council on an item not on the agenda, you can approach the microphone, make sure that the light is on, and give your name, address. For the public comment, we're going to do the five minutes like we have done in the past. And everybody has a public comment. Now that period is over. Just recognize that we will have a public comment for other sections of the agenda when we get to that point. Anybody to speak to the public comment this time? Yes?
Just push the button, it should turn green.
Okay, great. I'm Susan Harder, I live at 323 10th Avenue, Southwest Mount Vernon. And it's just been brought to my attention, you know, watching past videos of school board meetings and City Council, that there have been a lot of outsiders who have been allowed to come in and speak as if they're part of this community. And it's caused a lot of disruption and has...
Can the folks in the council chambers hear us?
Yeah, here he is.
Tom, where are you?
The light is green.
Your light is...
Is that better? Okay.
I'm going to text him, Deb.
There we go.
Is that better? I know, I'm like a...
Need to add more.
Low. Top. More.
It's okay.
There's a timer on the top of the screen.
Okay, I'll make it very quick. And basically, I have said it all. In that, in watching past council meetings, there have been many people who I do not believe are a part of this community, speaking in a very divisive way. I know, I'm looking at Deb, and sorry, I don't know how much louder I can speak. Okay, is this better? No. Okay, I don't know.
Deb, can you hear me?
Anybody?
Scott, can you hear me?
Sorry, the other microphone was better. Sorry about that.
Scott, you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can you hear her?
Can you hear me? Paul.
Yes.
Jess, can you hear me?
Okay. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
We can't hear you.
I don't know what to do.
Just keep going.
Okay, anyways, I'm just saying that there have been a lot of people coming to these meetings who are not in our city limits, speaking up, being very divisive. And I find it very upsetting. I really feel like the people who are allowed to speak at our City Council meetings should be members of this community and live in our city limits. That's basically all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have any comment regarding the public comment section of the meeting versus the agenda section? Christian?
Yeah.
Name and address, and...
Sure. Yeah, I want to echo. My name is Christian Andrews. I live at 610 Fifth Avenue Northwest. I just want to make the last comments more concise in that, as residents of the city of Mount Vernon, we vote for our council and for our mayor. Those who do not live here and do not vote for this council and this mayor don't have the same right to address our council. They do have representation. If it's regarding their children's education, they have a school board, they can address. And if it's another issue of property or other issues outside of the city, they can address their representatives at the Lynn County level. So I just want to thank you all for your work. I appreciate your tolerance of those who wish to express their wishes. We're an inclusive community, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, and I get to introduce Texas afternoon. Anybody else that wants to speak at the public comment section of the meeting before we get into the agenda? Yes, sir. Hancock, how are you doing?
Good. Hopefully, I don't have to hold that. So Kurt Hancock, 518 Second Street Northwest. And I do have something to say. It's related to an issue, but it's separate. But first of all, about what was just commented, I think that the policy is going to be voted on today. I think that it is based in no small part to policies such as in Cedar Rapids and so forth, and what happens in Mount Vernon, goes to Lisbon and to other communities. So these communities have an interest in what happens here, but we can have an exception on that. But what I wanted to say is, first of all, well, embrace free speech, not sexualizing our children. Councilman Rose wrote last week in The Sun about City Council meeting attendees speaking for and against recent proposals. He wrote, and I quote, "The homophobia laid bare shouldn't have been, but was a shock to me. You can dress up hate speech in all sorts of ways by pointing to the Bible in the name of protecting children, or as a longing for the good old days, but hate speech is still hate regardless of the frame you put it in, and it has no place in this community. I am one of those that spoke in opposition twice. Twice I peaceably assembled and petitioned my government for redress of grievance. That is a founding principle in this nation. First time I spoke in support of recent legislation such as removing sexually inappropriate material from school libraries. I read from All Boys Aren't Blue, which was in the Mount Vernon Middle School online library. It graphically encourages and teaches children to engage in pornography and in sexual homosexual activities. That is the sexualization of our children's." A week later, it was no longer in the middle school online library, although it is in the high school library. And I thank my voice for serving, and I thank you. That is how a civil community operates. Second time I spoke was against public display of M V love H B L G B T Q plus stickers. Because those stickers send subliminal messages to our children that the city endorses and condones them of any sexual activities.
That's completely opinion. Let's honor the speaker that's speaking. Let's not interrupt him. Let's go and be appropriate here.
I appreciate that, yeah. And I said that by all principles, this nation was founded on its wrong to sexualize children, and I asked my City Council not to do that. Councilman Rose's letter now lists 11 proposed flags for discussion and made no note of the stickers. I think, once again, my government heard me, and that is encouraging, this kind of open and honest discussion. However, when writing about those of us opposing the City Council, the councilman branded us as hate speakers and told us our voice has no place in the community. My voice has a place in the community. We have to get past this kind of divisive rhetoric. We need to unite our community by embracing our founding principles such as the First Amendment, which does secure free speech and the freedom to petition our government. So I urge the City Council and the public to unite as Americans around founding principles such as embracing free speech and not sexualizing children. We can, once again, be one nation under God if we unite around our founding principles. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Just recognize that G1 is for resolutions where we're going to be talking about flag and things like that. So if anybody has comments at that time, I'll address them, G1. Any other comments for the public comment section of the meeting, non-agenda items? Here we go, we'll move on to consent agenda. We've got two items, go over the City Council minutes and point to the whole library, word of speech. Any questions, staff, about that? It's actually a reaffirmative, thank you very much. Julia?
I move a little of the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moving second to move forward with the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, Deb? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. There are no public carings, no ordinance approvals this time. We're to G1, resolutions for approval, resolution 8-7-2023A, adopting the city of Mount Vernon 's flag policy. I think it's appropriate, before I start with comments from City Manager Nasby here, to make sure we cover our comments and recognize that we are a meeting of the public and we want to make sure that we are respectful of everybody in the public. With the large crowd that's here tonight, and the interest of trying to hear all opinions, I have asked Chief Shannon to put a timer of three minutes on the screen, hear as many citizens and hear as much of their input as possible. I'd like to suggest that comments can be made within those three minutes. And in the interest of time, if you have nothing to add from the previous three or four or five or however many speakers ahead of you, you just acknowledge your name and just say you support this cause or that cause or whatever. So I think everybody will want that. Again, I know there are strong opinions on both sides of this issue. I have sensed that. And while this may tend to get testy and contentious, I hope that we are a little more civil in how we relate to everybody here, we listen respectfully. And we strive to be, hopefully, in this public setting, our own best selves if we can. And after all, we are all in Mount Vernon. So with that preface, we'll start with Chris Nasby with city recommendations on this issue.
Mayor, Council, my report is part of the council packet, and my position on this policy has not changed. As I wrote in my report, this is a policy decision and not necessarily one that staff is going to make. So even though my recommendation is against the policy, it has everything to do with logistics and the issues surrounding putting flags up, half-staff, things of that nature. It has nothing to do with the arguments that have been made either for or against. With that being said, as I put in the report, nothing that we do cannot be overcome. So if it's the council's decision to move forward with said policy, we will make sure that that policy moves forward. Should not, then we would remain the same. But with that being said, the policy was at your request, only because there's very few in the community, in the state of Iowa, that have an actual policy. There are others that will allow flags to fly, but they don't have a written policy. I think that's a dangerous position for staff. So we've asked the policy, we asked the city attorney to put one together. It was taken from Cedar Rapids simply because Cedar Rapids had probably the most robust policy that we could find. Iowa City allows for flags to fly as well, but they don't have a written policy that they can provide to us. So with that being said, that is the policy that was put in front of you, so everything was in the packet. If you have any questions, we'll probably have an answer to that as we go through the meeting.
We may have questions as the process goes on.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Since this is a resolution before us, and I know you want to have public discussion, but I'm asking if council can have some discussion prior to, as that may have some bearing on what people want to speak to. I accept your decision, I don't...
We talked about it earlier, we were going to go...
You can do it. You can do it in many different ways. So before you open up to public comment, you're welcome to comment amongst yourselves. You can open it to public comment and then wait till a motion is made. It really doesn't matter. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak that would like to speak, so you're not limiting anybody's ability. So it's really up to you as a council whether or not you want to say comment before or after.
I will invite comment from the council now for a public comment, and then close with public comment. Close with council discussion. With that, you have a comment to make, Paul.
I do. So I am in favor of the city of Mount Vernon adopting a policy such as we have before us, and I thank Paul for the good work done here. I'm also sensitive to the logistical aspects of what this type of policy would have on our city staff. The reasons I'm in favor of this policy is because I believe Mount Vernon is an inclusive community. I believe that Americans welcome people who have different beliefs. We do have free speech. I thought the gentleman that spoke about that spoke about that very well this evening. We don't necessarily disagree on the finite discussion points, but we agree more than we disagree. I also believe that we can respectfully, as a community, present that through this type of policy. It began as a request to acknowledge a certain sector of our community, the LGBTQ community. I learned some interesting things from some people who spoke that I had never heard of. Apparently, I am not watching either the right newscasts, or I'm not reading the correct website, because MAP, to me, always meant a map, something to find my way. I was told it meant a minor attractive person. With all due respect to my very dear friends of a certain religion, denomination is more appropriate, you could say that it means minor attracted priests. Both words start with a P. It could be minor attracted police. And over and over, one community does not have the hold on bad things that happen to And we can single out individuals from any population you want that have bad intentions against others, be they gender, be they age, elder abuse, child abuse. It doesn't even have to do with sex. It's simply abuse. So I think we need to ratchet that finite point down and focus on, we are all human beings who deserve respect and understanding. And as a community, and as a longtime member of community, though not as long as many of you, I believe that's what Mount Vernon stands for. And a policy like this allows us to show we have open arms and open minds. And another thing that I learned in previous discussion was, I saw pictures of public displays that were brought to my attention by a citizen, that we can go cherry pick and say, look, this is how all the people of this group act, when in fact, that is not the case. And we can, again, single out and bring the worst forward of any individual. So what I would ask people to think about tonight, as we're discussing this, is that this is, in my view, honoring our humanity as a community. I am Swiss. I am a first-generation American. Back where I grew up in Ohio, we had a Swiss festival, because we had a lot of Swiss living here. In Cedar Rapids, we have Hobe Days, because that's important to the Bohemian community. We have Heritage Days here in Mount Vernon, and I actually offered a suggestion to the mayor that he called July Heritage Month. Another thing that came to me, and it was ironic, that Councilmember Rose brought forward this idea, because I had the same idea that night, because someone mentioned veterans only have one day. For me, veterans have 365 days and 366 in leap year, because they earned my respect. They were selfless in allowing us to be where we are and have what we have. However, I am glad to see that we can honor our veterans with a month, although I'll honor them every day. I thank them for my service when I see them and have identified them. So in light of all of those discussion points, the one thing that I would like to recommend is, we have an area just west of the building that used to have four trees, had some benches, and it's fallen into some disarray. Trees have died. I believe that that could be our welcome square with a flag pool for our commemorative flags, as determined by the City Council, to fly in the appropriate months. They are not attached to the flag pool with our United States flag or state flag, because to me, those have a higher place in our community, as they should. And we should honor them. I don't want commemorative flags on every City Flag Pool building. I don't believe it has value, and I certainly don't think our staff should spend that amount of effort on a commemorative event every month. But I do believe strongly that something like that has value. Thank you.
Paul? Question of the other council members, want to address anything now or wait till after public comment? Anybody? Then we will move to public comment then. Open up the public comment section of the meeting. If anybody would like to speak towards this topic, one way or the other. Again, just the name and address, and just remind them of the timers on...
Green lights on, it's all good to go.
Should be good to go, yes.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Roberts. I live at 902 Palisades Road here in Mount Vernon. My comments will be brief. I first want to start out by saying two words to all of you. Thank you. You have a type of job, day in and day out, that I don't think you hear that often enough. And as someone, though I've not been a resident of Mount Vernon for a long time, I do have somewhat understanding of the work that you do and the challenges that you work under. I moved here about two years ago. Main reason, closer to grandchildren. That's probably one of the best reasons, I would think, though. I lived in Iowa City for decades and worked there for the same length of time. However, I first got to know Mount Vernon years ago when both my daughters came here to go to Cornell College. Cornell became their college home, graduated from Cornell, and Mount Vernon became their home for several years. I came up to Mount Vernon quite frequently, and really, not every time, just to see my daughters. Sometimes it was just, I wanted to hang out in Mount Vernon and go drive through the Pal or do a walk through there, because Mount Vernon was just the type of community that not only was I glad my daughters had a home like this during college, that I often thought, you know, if I ever decided to leave Iowa City, this is the type of town I would want to live in. Most of all, during those years, I was very positive that I knew my daughters were in a town that was welcoming and open, and that was very important to me, extremely important. This town has a history, a long history of being vibrant and accepting community, and that reality is not something that happens just by accident. It happens because of people who work here, live here, are teachers. It happens because of people who work here, live here, are teachers, are community leaders, are community in general. To take a quote from a recent letter to the editor, and I want to extend my thanks to a member of the council who wrote that letter, to quote that, "If the adoption of this policy and subsequent flying of a flag on city property signals acceptance and love to amuse the marginalized both in and outside our community, then it is exactly what I believe one of those values and goals ought to be." That statement says it all. I truly appreciate you considering this policy. Mount Vernon, I believe, is ready to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberts.
Hello. My name is Tanya Tenley and I live at 850 13th Avenue Southwest over by the high school where I also work. I'd like to thank the council members for your work toward establishing our community as a welcoming and inclusive place for everyone. I especially want to take a moment to express my support for both the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement and for the proposed display of flags policy. As a veteran of the U.S. Army, I am pleased to see the flag for National Veterans and Military Families Month on the list. And as an educator in the community, who's usually a better volunteer here than I am. I am so happy to see Juneteenth, Pride, mental health awareness, disability employment awareness, and all the heritage flags included. I'm very proud to live in this community of compassion, inclusion, dignity, and respect, to quote the mayor's words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeWitt. Anywhere else like to speak?
Hi. My name is Carla Steffens. I am a 25-year resident of Mount Vernon and proud to say so. I have taught for most of my life, but in the last three years, after earning my master's degree in social work, I am now and have been a therapist over at Cornell College these last, again, three years. What I would like to share, and again, in brief, is the number of young people who come into my office daily talking about being afraid to go home because they're not accepted at home. How this is the first time in their life they're able to show who they are. And so whoever that is, whether it's they're gay, lesbian, trans, these students are in anguish for not being accepted. It is up to us, in order to save their lives, and I do mean quite literally, save their lives, to acknowledge and include and to celebrate our diversity rather than try to hide it and erase it. Thank you very much.
My name is Ron Teleki. I've lived in town 52 years and live on Candlestick Drive. And I don't object to the policy. I like the suggestion, the designated area. I guess my, I have questions as to what end. I have a multiracial family. We raised four kids. One was black. He received incredible amounts of racial abuse heaped on him at the high school in our community. I have a daughter whose skin is yellow. She received not nearly as much as my black son. I'm just saying, we're the recipient of a lot of things that weren't right. My wife and I taught them how to deal with that. We had Bob Neaker teaching them all high school. We had Jeff Swieber, heck of a good man. We taught them how to do that. We didn't come to City Hall for a policy. And again, I don't object to it, but if you adopt it, to what end? I'd like to see international adoption on there as a day. A national adoption as a day. If it's a policy, then do all the city employees have to sign on the line that they agree with it to be employed? Current employees, they all say, "We agree with this" or "to be a city employee." Have you thought about that? Do you want that? Maybe you don't want that. I'm just saying, I got no argument with anybody because I see an awful white audience. My family was white. And we dealt with a lot of stuff, but we did it. If you go down this road as legislating stuff, you can do that and you should do because nobody should be subjected to abuse because of their skin color or their values or their sexuality. Or I get that. But you start down this road, where you can have 11 flags and a year you could have 20, I mean, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Teleki, and thank you, Carla. Thank you, too, very much.
Hello. My name is Augustus Taylor Twago. I was a Cornell graduate. I live here with Chris and Mariah. I'm also a partner in a new restaurant in town. I own a couple of different businesses and a global coaching company. And part of what I have to say is that as a transgender person, there's just something you just can't understand about what it's like to be so sensitive to everybody else's opinion and be so willing to sacrifice yourself to make other people comfortable that you would rather not exist. And that you erase yourself as much as you can for as long as you can. And so you literally put yourself to death. And then when you wake up and you decide that dying's not the answer and that living is, you learn to speak. And you speak slowly and you speak quietly and you say the smallest bit of truth that someone can find agreement with. Not to oppress anyone, not to offend anyone, just to say that, hey, I'm super sensitive when someone calls me a she and a her. And that when I'm in the bathroom and I have long hair and I'm 6'2" and I'm 265 pounds and I'm 15 years old and people are telling me to leave the bathroom, I don't know what to say. I say, "I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I'm supposed to be here." Right? So now as a 32-year-old man and a business owner, I don't know what to put. Before I owned my own businesses, I tried to be employed. I didn't know what to put in their boxes, male or female. What do I put? Which bathroom do I use? So I go to an interview, right? Do I have to have a conversation about the bathroom right before I'm even allowed to have an opportunity at the job? Yes, yes, I do. Yep, so I have to talk about my genitals before I can even talk about my ability to articulate myself or to run a business all by myself, three of them, while losing my dad, while having no mother, while my sister raises three kids, and I pay for it. 32 years old. So I understand the fear, right? I understand the fear, but I was afraid before I was queer and now I'm not. So queerness is something you don't understand, like being left-handed. Okay? But when you're left-handed, you know you're left-handed because you've tried the right hand. I'm trans. I know I'm trans because I was a good-looking woman and it sucked. I tried. I tried. Deep down, I was a women's basketball player. I was good. I had everything stacked, female, got it, nailed it. Suicidal, killed myself, Cornell graduate, right? Gave the commencement speech. Look it up. I was dead. You, you, I spoke to you. I spoke to you. Sexual assault survivor, right here. Cornell couldn't handle it, right? Got to put it away. All right? So everything you go through means something, okay? I'm here because I wouldn't be here without Mount Vernon. I'm from Scottsdale, Arizona, right? That's the best, Scottsdale, Arizona, right? Class of surgery capital of the world, right? No, madness. This place is a beautiful place. Thank you so much for my life and for my experience here. Y'all have changed me exactly. And I'm here to just give love, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gus. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Wiltshire. And thanks, City Council, for being here and for having this discussion and for hosting the discussion and for all the work that you do. I also want to say that families, I want to start by saying that families who adopt children is not a marginalized community. So that's why a flag for them might not be an equivalency there.
Name and address, you want to say?
Thank you. Katrina Anderson, 196 Joseph Lane, southeast here in Mount Vernon. My husband Joel and I run Little Scratch Coffee Roasters, which is also a new business here on First Street in Mount Vernon. We have two sons, nine and six, who attend school at Washington Elementary. And we've lived in Mount Vernon-Lisbon for about eight years now. I believe that having our own viewpoint and living our truth is the best way for us to celebrate the freedom that we Americans hold dear. In my opinion, the recent mayoral proclamation and the display of the LGBTQ flags here in our town celebrates American individuality at its finest. It celebrates the evolution of our idea as a nation of gender and sexuality. Queerness is so much more than the sexual kink that some people believe it to be. And advancing our understanding of gender and sexuality beyond the heteronormative Christian definition of marriage is important and relatively simple, love is love. The posting of the flags is a support is our community attempting to right the many wrongs done towards marginalized members of our society. I'm originally from another small town in Iowa. It's a wonderful town in many ways, but I left and will never return to live there because it's religiously homogenous. There's but one church in town that pretty much everyone attends. If you don't attend the church, everyone knows it and wonders why not. As a result, there's not much room for diversity in belief and lifestyle. My family moved to Mount Vernon-Lisbon because of its diversity. At least eight faith communities, by my count. Farmers markets, yoga classes, a college, excellent food. It felt and feels refreshing to have all the benefits of small-town life, knowing your neighbors, involvement in civic extracurriculars, small class sizes at the schools, easy access to countryside, while also being able to find the more pleasant aspects of bigger city cultural life. Mount Vernon feels that way because it's made up of people of different ethnicities, religions, educational backgrounds, sexual orientations, and family structures. From this stems curiosity instead of assumption. There's room for different belief systems to coexist. And it's a beautiful thing that we can't take for granted. So what we have is a kind of democratic ideal. To paraphrase the educational philosopher John Dewey, "True democracy is characterized by shared experiences and common interests alongside free discourse between members of different social groups." There is a connection between the chilly reception of the mayoral proclamation by some and the work happening at the state level to ban books, to limit transgender freedoms, and to steal my bodily autonomy as a woman. It's anti-feminist, anti-queer, anti-difference, and anti-diversity. The very American, very patriotic gospel of individual liberty is not owned by any one group.
Ma'am.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for your comments.
Can I wrap with one sentence?
One sentence.
I think the opposing force to democracy is authoritarianism and the lack of tolerance and downright hate displayed by certain groups and voices seems to crave a monopoly on flags on freedom itself. But that's not how freedom works. Thank you.
Reminder of the timer for everybody. I'll make sure we get onto that. Respect whatever's on. Anybody else like to speak at this time?
There's a podium, I must speak to it. My name is Jeff Swieber. I'm recently returned to Mount Vernon. I live at 1449 St. Southwest in Mount Vernon. And I just wanted to speak to you because usually sit on where you're sitting. And to be on this side, it's an opportunity to at least express what I think makes this community great. I came here in 1977 as a freshman at Cornell College. I stayed for 28 years as a student at Cornell. I didn't stay all 28 years. But I became a teacher in 1981. And then I became a school superintendent in 2002. And in 2009, I had to see if there was something else out there that could beat Mount Vernon. Well, I've come back to tell you that there's not something else to beat Mount Vernon. I was at two other schools. They were great school districts. I love them, but they're not Mount Vernon. And the reason they're not Mount Vernon is because this community has embraced a great deal of diversity and thought in all the years that I've been here. And all the things that I think that are great about this community are about that way in which we work with one another. We may have disagreements on certain issues, but we usually figure out a way to make them work. And I think the policy that you have before you, I understand city administrators' problems of moving the flag up and down. I think it's a great policy that expresses a lot of our concepts about accepting many, many different people into this community. That's why I came back. I have three grandkids. But coming back to this community was very easy to come back to because of that kind of puts its arms around you and wants to try to support you in as many ways as you possibly can. So, council, I think you have a great proposal. I think you have something that you can work on with that. But I wanted to tell you, I'm glad you are the one sitting there and I get to go walk back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swieber. Thank you for your many years of service to the Mount Vernon School District.
Want to speak at this?
Yes, please. Name and address, first.
Hello. My name is Ada Jones. I go by any pronouns and I live here in Mount Vernon. First of all, I really appreciate the city's openness and willingness to new things concerning this flag policy. And it's nice to know that some elected officials can be civil to me and kids like me. Secondly, the flag policy is really important. Representation is what makes people feel valued and equal and that is a cornerstone to community. When I travel, I look for signs to support or lack thereof. And that affects how I dress, how I act, what I say, and most importantly, what bath are my use. Recently, I've been doing this in town as well just because of recent politics. And I know I am not alone. The city of Mount Vernon is showing support that is clear and open to marginalized communities and make people feel safe in our community. Concerning the flag policy, I am beyond thrilled. The ask slash idea evolved into 11 celebratory months, featuring Black History Month, Women's History Month, Arab-American Heritage Month, Asian-American and Native Hawaiian slash Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, LGBTQ Pride Month, Juneteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, Native American Heritage Month, and National Veterans and Military Family Month. As the saying goes, more equality for others, not be less equality for you. And this list can and might expand because diversity is also what we should celebrate. The bottom line is, this is a scare time. For kids and adults alike, this policy will be uplifting and empowering, something that is so worth remembering now. So please go ask anybody.
Thank you, Ada. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak at this time?
This hasn't been quite addressed, so I thought I would go ahead. And I did tie myself, so it should be right.
I hope so.
My name is Lynda Camp and I live at 321 12th Avenue Southwest in Mount Vernon. All right. Throughout the history of the human race across the globe, societies have chosen who among them should be targeted as the enemy and as the other. Race against race, religion against religion. One common other throughout history happens to be people we now refer to as the LGBTQ community. They have been oppressed by being targeted with hatred, challenges to their moral character through violence, imprisonment, and even punishment by death through no fault of their own. Now we have become educated about this naturally occurring state of being through the study of the science of human development, even to the depth of the chromosomal level. Diversity exists naturally in all aspects of human development. Unfortunately, throughout the history, too many LGBTQ individuals have been forced to remain silent regarding who they are. remain silent regarding who they are out of fear of the consequences waiting for them by way of hateful words, violence, shunning, or discrimination. By simply flying the flag, the city of Mount Vernon is acknowledging that people, children and adults, of the LGBTQ community are welcome, celebrated as fellow citizens, and that they have allies here. To live a normal, everyday life not knowing who will judge you through painful rhetoric or outrageous accusations of criminality is more than just hard. It is soul-piercing and totally unnecessary. While a simple flag will not change the minds of those who oppose the policy or change the hardened hearts influenced by misconceptions or ancient sources of authority that can be contradicted by the educated, it does signal that there are allies here. Any store displaying a simple sticker of support indicates there are allies within. Some measures of safety, measures of being okay to be who you were born to be, goes far in the well-being of these children and adults. I fully support the policy that includes a visual display supporting Pride Month. It is time to liberate these folks and their families from the oppression that has prevented them from living as a full and whole member of our human family of equal value and equal worth.
You've got 10 seconds left. Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Just hang on, we'll catch you back. You can stand back behind her.
I wasn't going to speak tonight. My name's Greg Payton. I live at 302 Sixth Street Northeast. And I mean, as you can see in my shirt over in the back here, I love flags. I have no problem with flags at all. Every flag I'm wearing stands for independence. I believe in individualism. I believe in community to a certain extent. You know, individualism first, of course. Well, we're basically moving track up here. Like I said, I love flags. I even proposed one, was it two months ago? You know, let's have a, was it Veterans? Something for July. Uh, I can't remember what it was. I have to look at my notes from the prior one. But I actually found this a couple weeks ago. I like to read code. I like to read news. I've always since moved here. And this is from the Mount Vernon Sun, October 20th, 2020, when there was a similar issue to this. It was regarding the mask mandates, and some of you council members were currently out there. What this comes down to is not about feelings, emotions, who gets represented, who doesn't. It comes down to lawsuits. And it says right here in the quote, "Scott Rose, Deborah Herman, Stephanie West, all provided arguments for moving forward either with a lawsuit," or sorry, "even with a lawsuit on horizon." I don't know who wants to get sued. Someone, some jerk is going to come along. They're going to get upset, and they're going to say, who knows, it's going to be some neo-Nazi freak. All right? I want to fly my flag. What are we going to do when they want to do that? It's not a problem if everybody keeps agreeing, let's fly this flag, let's fly this flag, let's fly this flag. I mean, all of them, all eleven of them look pretty good to me for the most part. But it's that one idiot group that has funned you, they come along, and that minute you say no, that's when we open the door to a lawsuit. I mean, our nation is $32 trillion in debt right now. People can't even, they don't even realize how much money that is. Do we just keep turning on the printing press? Do we just keep decreasing the taxes? I mean, look how much in taxes we pay here every single year, and it just keeps going up thanks to our government. So I mean, I don't know what you guys are going to do. I'm personally not in favor of any of this going through. Like I said, I love flags, but I'm going to fly them in my truck, I'm going to fly them in my backyard, I'm going to fly them in my front yard, I'm going to put stickers along my vehicles, and I encourage everybody else to do that, too. Let people know what you believe in. But yeah, I mean, I guess that's it. I just want you all to take into consideration, this is about the fiduciary responsibility that the mayor brought up two years ago. You know, the bill did pass, and it was the former mayor, I believe, who vetoed it because he knew about that fiduciary responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payton. That was great. Now we have. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Quinn Alice. I live at 321 12th Avenue Southwest. Hi, Linda. I just kind of wanted to come up here and talk about overall the flag. I think it's super cool that Mount Vernon wants to basically have all these flags to represent marginalized groups and to just show that we're open and welcoming to everybody. I love that so much. I kind of wanted to talk about how important this is for a lot of the kids in the school community. I've been here since I was about five years old. I was up through the whole school district, Washington Elementary through to high school. And through that time, I, me and my friends, all kind of had, we all had different things going on with us that we feel weren't represented well enough. The idea that there was a now a mental health wellness lab they want to do or for the month would be amazing, because I had so many friends in middle school and high school that had so many mental health issues and they were not taken care of in ways that I personally feel were beneficial for them. I also feel that having a flag for the LGBTQ+ community would be super awesome, because I again have a lot of friends, and myself and members of my family are part of that community. And I feel that growing up in Mount Vernon, yes, there is a lot of definitely diversity and inclusion. I also feel that having the town as a whole represent that with flags would be amazing, because in the high school, there were definitely instances that my friends and I had experienced where there were people who were rude to them, or called them slurs, or experienced things that they should not experience just because they are part of a certain community. Overall, I think the policy is really awesome, because it really would allow Mount Vernon to show that they do support these groups and that they are open and willing to making sure that everyone feels safe. Having a flag or having a sticker on a business or anything shows someone who's part of any of these communities that they are welcome in this building and they are welcome in this community. And I think that is so, so important for everyone to have, because making sure that members of this community are welcome in this community is absolutely instrumental to make sure this community is healthy and successful and is able to grow and change and just have a community that all is able to work together. And I mean, like after the Doratio, like a ton of, this is really random, but like after the Doratio, a ton of people were and ended up helping at my dad's because we had so many trees that were lost and we lost so many buildings, and a lot of them were Mount Vernon community members. And so overall, I just think having these flags and having this policy is great to just ensure that there is enough diversity and inclusion in this community. Thanks.
Thank you, too. Take a pause here. Mr. Swibert, is there anybody out there that would like to just light up against the wall in here? I see movement out there, but I don't know if there's anybody.
No, it's just the, oh, three of them.
Okay, that's fine. I'll make sure everybody's walking in here. They're good?
They're good.
All right. Would you like to be the next speaker?
Chris Andrews, again, 6'10" at the Abbey Northwest. I appreciate, again, all your work and your willingness to put yourselves in a bout, put yourselves in front of people to a lot of criticism, to a lot of praise. You don't get enough of it, so thank you one last time. Councilor Turner, I think your idea was fantastic. I like that we had, I think that would be wonderful to have a side display that is not connected to our flag pole that flies the American flag and the state flag. I'm also in agreement with people that have spoken. I'm more conservative in my views that I think we do open ourselves up to lawsuits. I think we do open ourselves to criticism, vandalism, bullies. But maybe those lawsuits are worth it if we can lift up one young person who feels like they can't breathe or they don't want to live. I think it's important that we define something here. Hate speech, I certainly consider, when we tell somebody in our community or somewhere else in our country that they don't exist, when we say that because you're gay, trans, queer, deciding who you are, not even sexualizing them. They're just people trying to figure out who they are, where they fit. Calling them pedophiles is hate. Calling them un-Christian is hateful. Calling them anything, let them label themselves. And again, I don't want a lawsuit, I don't want vandalism, I don't want groups of thugs coming into our community and interrupting our life and our way of life and business. I'll be brief. Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate you all, and please keep your language loving and respectful.
Mr. Andrews, anyone else like to speak at this time? Or turn over to public comment from the House of Representatives.
I'm on the bad out of Downers. Jerry Neerhalzer, Mechanicsville, Iowa. I had a big thing that I was going to speak here tonight. But I've had conversations with many people in the years about city council. You know, whoever has the room, has the room. You guys have the room. I would just be brunting my sword on the rock. But I am curious, why you guys think we have to do this, specifically? Why do you think we have to do this now? I don't hate anybody because of their sexuality or their preference, but I am certainly persecuted in today's world life. I wouldn't say persecuted, that's common, by people that disagree with you guys. And I don't disagree with you or any specific person, but I, I'm an old-fashioned Bible fromer, right? And I believe that spirits are real, and it's the spirit that is behind this that I am afraid of. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Neerhalzer. To the, anyone else still like to speak? Yes, sir. Welcome, Amy Naderzis.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Daniel Riley, and I'm a 30-year veteran of psychiatry, and I live at 1530 Apple Creek Drive in Mount Vernon. And I would like to point out that whatever I have to say and stuff that some of my friends have said is not hate speech. We don't hate people that have a different sexual orientation, okay? We dislike the behaviors that they choose, okay? I believe that every person has inherent value as a creature of God, a child of God created in your mother's womb, and because of that fact, every person has value. Now, we also have free will. We can choose to do good, or we can choose to do bad, and that's an individual person's choice. So a lot of us think that the homosexual lifestyle is sinful, okay? We've all sinned. And so it's, you know, if you want to use the hate speech, go ahead, use that term, but apply it appropriately to someone's behavior, not the person themselves. At least, that's the way I see it, and most of the people that I'm friends with see it that way. The other thing I want to point out is that I am completely in favor of putting all these flags up that show support to various causes. I think that's good and fine. However, the LGBTQ+ flag, in my view, is promoting an ungodly lifestyle, a sinful lifestyle, and none of the other flags do that. None of the other flags do that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Riley.
Hi, my name is Simon Crocker. I grew up here. I was a high school graduate in 2017.
Did Ted Rest do, yeah. Do you remember on Ted that?
I, yeah, I do. I live on Ted that, and it's my parents' house, so. Sorry, I'm not a super great public speaker. You know, like a lot of people my age, after graduation, I left Mount Vernon, not for any real reason, just because it's a big wide world and I wanted to get out and see it. And I think an unfortunate reality is a lot of people who do leave Mount Vernon don't come back. I think one of the reasons that is, is because of socially regressive kind of cultures that tend to persist in small towns. And I think this is a great opportunity to actively encourage and celebrate our diversity. And at the end of the day, that's not only better for the harmony of community, but for the economic well-being of this small town. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come forward? Julie first, yeah. Sorry.
Julie Andrews, 704 Second Avenue, Northwest, Mount Vernon, Iowa. I'm going to take some of the emotion out of our speak for time and speak only to the policy itself. The flag policy offered consideration wisely allows our publicly-elected council people, y'all, the opportunity to curate what we display. In previous council meetings, there's been concerns about who gets to control what is put on display. This policy takes those concerns off the table. This policy allows our elected officials, y'all, to have the opportunity to say what flies and what doesn't. The groups mentioned in the policy are diverse and inclusive. I especially appreciate the council considering Military Veterans Month as a part of the groups to be honored. The policy also protects our city employees, who don't need to be in the position of deciding who hangs what and when and where and why. It's not your job, though, I'm grateful that you do your job. The policy gives city employees clear instructions by our elected officials and takes away guesswork and personal opinion. I vote for city council people to make decisions about city zoning and public streets and civic organizations. I trust you to represent Mount Vernon in those decisions. Likewise, I trust you to decide through proclamations and public display that what we, Mount Vernon, represent. The lists of groups on this proclamation or on this policy are inclusive, open, and malleable. I'm sure groups may change as the culture in the council changes. And if I have any concern about who is included on this policy, clearly I know the forum to speak. And for the record, what I personally have found in Mount Vernon is that Mount Vernon represents folks committed to it. There is space for all of us here to grow, to vote, to serve on civic boards, to support our town, and to fly our respective flags. I hope you will support the flag display policy, and I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
I had to pull this, or can I just?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. Jen Staderson, I live at 207 Campbell Stick Drive. I'm also the teacher librarian at the school, and so I have a couple different comments. One is actually to a comment that was made earlier in the evening. The book at the middle school was not removed based on your comments at a prior city council meeting. That was not a book that the school library in Mount Vernon selected, and it was removed for very independent reasons. And so I And so I wanted to speak to that first because I feel like I owe it to my school community, to my children at school, to know that your librarian did not take that book out because of the comments. Okay. Second of all, I had a big, long speech, and I'm not going to read it because so many of you have spoken to the points that I had in there. But why are we doing it now? Because we should have done it 25 years ago. My dear neighbors' children were in school before they got to school, so that those kids at the school and our community members did not exhibit that type of behavior to those children. Who, I love my neighbor, I love my neighbor's kids. I love all of our kids, and I love all of our community members. And so why are we doing it now? Why is it worth the hassle of trying to figure out the logistics? Because there are humans at stake.
Thank you, Ms. Standerson. Anyone else that would like to speak this time? Give you all a minute or two to think about this, and then we'll turn it over to comments from council here. But any opportunities for people that are on Zoom call? Anybody like to comment at this time? You're not getting anything?
Mayor, if I can, while I have a law, there were three items that were brought up during this process that I'd like to address. The first is, remember, we're getting rid of the fire station. So the west location may not necessarily be available to us, but there are other locations here at City Hall. I do appreciate the limitation of one building and it cuts down on the logistics. The second, in regards to my employees, I have 27 full-time employees, and I have close to 120 when I have seasonal and part-time employees. Not one of them has to sign a contract or agree with everything that the council puts on the table. What I do ask my employees to do is respect the fact that they work for me, and I work for the city council. And when the council adopts something, that is what we move forward with. I don't expect every one of my employees, many of which are sitting in the audience right now, to think like anybody. They're here to do a job, and they're paid to do a job. The policy decisions of this community are made by the individuals sitting at this table. And lastly, I would be a very rich man if I received money for every time I've been threatened to be sued. The lawsuits don't necessarily concern me as much as the fact that I am here to make a recommendation based upon the fact that we're using taxpayer funds. As a council, going back to the policy decisions, whether or not and how far we fight a potential lawsuit is completely up to this group. You were elected. You do that on a regular basis, based upon recommendations of the staff. With that being said, I did put this in my report. This has been fought and tried in many locations. Not that that will save the city from making any money should somebody bring a lawsuit forward, but this definitely would not be the first, probably nor the last time that this will get argued in front of a court of law. But I felt like I needed to say those three things. My recommendation, again, since it is my recommendation again, is because I have the pleasure of looking specifically at facts and whether or not I think monies are going to be spent in locations, the logistics of my staff, so on and so forth. But that is it. The policy itself is not up to me. It's not up to my staff. So I just wanted to clarify those three points for you, so you understood that.
Thank you to those three expressions. Anybody else like to speak at this time?
Can I say one more? Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Did the city attorney in giving this advice not sue him? Is that true? I think I read that somewhere.
So both the city attorney and staff, again, being risk averse, will have both recommended against for those very reasons. Number one, logistics, and two, is the potential for a lawsuit. Same as the mask ordinance, we were openly threatened at a public meeting that we were going to be sued. We never were. We can't stop people from using the court system. You're watching that play out every day on various news media stations. So the answer to that is yes. I would still and have to the two individuals that started this conversation, had open discussions with them, and told them from the very start that I would be recommending for those very reasons. But again, that's why it's not staff's decision, it's the council's decision. So to answer your question, yes, we both recommended, and I'll still stand by that. But you pay me to do a job. You elect them to set policy.
I got a quick question for Chris. So the city was not, there was no lawsuit, no litigation ever started or anything?
Nope.
Minutes from the October 5th meeting said that there was all the water services were plaintiffs in the lawsuit. They also said that the lawsuit was served.
Nope.
Seven minutes.
Nope.
So I'm just trying to clarify.
No, they were there, and they said they would. We passed the mask ordinance, and we never went to court over anything.
Well, wasn't the bill vetoed?
What's that?
I thought the bill was vetoed here, too.
There was one portion of a bill that was vetoed.
I wasn't letting you hear. I was just trying to ask.
No, there was one portion of the bill that was vetoed. They limited it to public buildings. The lawsuit was threatened to be over everything. It was never filed. We did have two attorneys present to state that they would, and they never did.
Thank you. I can speak to that. 27 years with the school board and since I was city council and year two as mayor, I can't count the number of times, whether it's been in a public meeting like this or in a church parking lot or the aisles of Garry's, that they're threatened to be sued. That's not a laughing matter. I mean, that's something I take seriously. I know what I can be sued for, and I go through things like voting meetings and, you know, things that are inappropriate with open meetings laws and so on. But I have not been sued, actually came through, a single time. And that's in 25 years or whatever. Threat of suit. I mean, I think the record is three in one day. I've got enough to pick the day. Does that inspire anybody else to speak at public comments? And you made your clarifications. City council discussion time. I think we're at that point. Is the discussion over? Should we make a motion? Well, I think it will allow questions to the process. I mean, this is not something that's not a public hearing, per se. So we can still take comment from the audience if there's a question.
That is up to the council. Typically, once a motion is made, there can be more discussion. A motion and a second, there can be more discussion with council. You do not necessarily have to open that back up for public conversation. That is my decision.
What is the whole group on that?
I'd like to move approval of the policy as presented.
I would say. And before we go, I would like to take a comment.
I'd like to.
Okay. Thanks for the time. I don't say a whole lot of these council meetings. I'm the new person on the council. It's a pretty veteran, austere group. I've really been following their lead and have learned a ton, and they've been wonderful to work with. But let me begin by saying that I really appreciate everyone who's here tonight, and there's been previous meetings where we've been discussing this issue. And I really appreciate those people that have had the courage to get up and speak and send emails as well. In my opinion, that you, because you've chosen to be part of this process, is really important, and that's a healthy component to a democracy. So thank you for being here, for doing that. As a city council member, I believe that I have three primary duties. There are, I wear a lot of hats, and I think we all do on the council. But the first one is really to help identify and push through the vision of the community. The second is to make sure that we have the human and financial resources to live into that vision. And the third is to make sure that we maintain a positive community culture. And so the commemorative flag policy that we're just about ready to vote on here touches on each of these three, but of course, it really touches on the community culture. The commemorative flag policy that we're about ready to vote on here, excuse me, let me say that I am going to be voting yes on the commemorative flag policy because I believe that as it is written, it is flexible enough to overcome the logistical issues that the city administrators have identified. And I also believe that it represents a middle way to the original request that we received to fly a pride flag in June, and also many of the objections to flying a pride flag that we have received since that time. And by the way, I just want to say that moving toward a middle way does not mean that an argument has been lost. In my opinion, it means that the argument was heard, and an effort has been made to compromise, which is why now we are looking at a flag policy that includes 11 flags. I'm voting yes also because I believe that symbols are important. By having a formal policy and ultimately displaying commemorative flags, the city of Mount Vernon recognizes that people that live here and that visit here have and are overcoming adversity, and that they are supported here. Thank you, Mayor, for granting me this time.
Council Legal. Deb? Yes?
Yes, thank you. So in addition to the comments by Councilman Engel, which I highly support, I also want to tell you all that it is my intention to vote yes for this policy. The reason is, I firmly believe each of those flags represents a part of our history as not only in a community, but as a country, in coming to a healthy resolution to try to move forward for each of those marginalized groups. I'd like to say I have been marginalized. I am part of that marginalized group. My journey was professional, was marginalized because I was a woman, was marginalized because I was too smart, marginalized for all the reasons why I was discounted. I don't want people to feel like that. I don't want to live in a community where we are scared to talk to somebody because they're slightly different. I would like to be part of a community, support the community, to learn from our lessons of the past, to try to craft, use those lessons, to try to jointly craft what our future looks like. I think those symbols give us a context to remember where we have been and to challenge ourselves to talk about why we were there, why that symbol was important, and what we want to continue our journey on. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herman.
Yeah, I'll go next because, you know, you all have spoken, and Scott wrote a wonderful letter to the editor in The Sun this week. I don't really have a whole lot to add other than, and I'm not going to think of who said it, but the majority must speak for those whose voice is weaker. And I believe that. I believe that that is my job on the city council, that is my job as a human being, that is my job as a Christian. I also encourage all of you to look at the list. Look at every one of those flags on the list. I personally, or members of my immediate family, are represented on five of them. And I bet that that might be the case with several of them, that there's not one or two, but there's more than that. So I just encourage you to think about this overall and what that means to all of us as individuals and as a whole community. So for that reason, I'm going to go on to pass.
Councilwoman.
Tactical question. Yes, because Scott wanted to say a few words. Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Sorry. First of all, just logistically, I'm in the Northwoods of Minnesota, and the best reception I could find is next to a highway. So if I mute myself, it's because there's a truck going by. I'll come right back. Secondly, I want to recognize that the first PoliSci class I ever took was taught by Jeff Schweber. So a little trippy for me, virtually sitting in a dais and having him approach the podium. Thank him for what's about to come. I feel like I made myself pretty clear in the letter to the editor, so I'm not going to add much to my thoughts there. But I did want to address a couple of points made by folks this evening. First was Mr. Teleki mentioning his children. And I was in school at the same time here in Mount Vernon with some of his kids, I believe. And I can attest to some of the things, hold on, truck. That they had to go through, and I'm not by any means going to say that I can fully appreciate it, having been a white guy, right? I mean, we're in the majority and are not typically of the oppressed. But I wonder how better prepared your kids would have been to be able to, in your words, deal with it if there were outward showings from the city or from the school explicitly supporting the fact that they were African-American or that they were Asian-American? I don't necessarily know the answer to that question, but I can't imagine that it would have hurt. Secondly, I wanted to, and Chris addressed it a bit, with the thought that we need to make decisions based on fiduciary responsibility that Mr. Papen brought up. That's one of the huge deciding factors in the vast majority of the decisions that we make. We can't fix all the roads all the time. We can't build the pool that we want tomorrow. We can't do a lot of the things that we would love to be able to do because there are only so many dollars available. But there are certain points, and this is honestly only the second time in my coming up on the end of eight years on city council, where, to me, the issue that we're discussing is bigger than that fiduciary responsibility. And to be able to show support for a series of marginalized populations and communities within our larger community takes precedence. So that's what I've got on that. Finally, Dr. Riley mentioned that he felt the flying of the LGBTQ plus flag would promote a sinful lifestyle and an ungodly lifestyle. And one of the first things that I learned in one of those PoliSci classes was the separation of church and state. We do not legislate what is or is not sinful. And I don't think there's anybody in this room that actually wants us to when they think it all through. Because what I consider sinful may not have any bearing on what you consider sinful. And that is not a road I believe any of us actually want to go down. So I don't make the decisions that I make on this council based on what may or may not be considered by some to be sinful. I make them based on what I think is best for the community and what is best... I make them based on what I think is best for the community, and what is best for the folks that don't necessarily have the voice in the community that I do. So I, finally, I would like to speak to the logistical concerns of staff. I'm not immune to those, I fully appreciate them, I do believe that we can work past them, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Engel.[1418.04][1418.04](applause) So tactical question. As I read this, I see nothing in it that we need to change to implement a one pool, one location logistical.
No, so the key word in the policy itself is the word "may."
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
The fact that you have "may" in there allows you to just basically direct staff to fly that poll, or fly that flag individually at the council.
Okay. So being in quality, I know the difference between "may" and "shall," so I appreciate that definition, too. I appreciate everyone's input, and I echo strongly Scott's comment regarding the separation of church and state. There are many places in this world where the church is the state. I have been to one of them. I have also been to one where the state is the church. I do not want to live in either of those at all. And I will tell you that I believe that we, as a blended community of human beings, who can understand and work together, and I think Craig said it best, and I wish we had more of it. I remember growing up when compromise was not a dirty word in Washington, DC, when we come together and compromise and understand each other. I believe this policy drives us toward understanding each other. And we, I think, had a very respectful discussion tonight, and I appreciate everyone's comments. They do matter, and having a forum where you can speak your piece is important. And I'd also invite everyone and remind them that you can speak to anyone on this council at any time, via email, visit, you can certainly visit my home, I guess I won't speak for the rest of the conference. You can reach me via phone. I will always listen. Any decision I make isn't made before I walk into this room. It's made after I've heard all of the information I need to, from staff and from anyone that speaks to me. And that's a very important tenet that I've lived since I first had the opportunity to serve on council in 2000, and then as mayor for six years, and, I don't know, a couple other times. So thank you.[1630.24][1633.92](applause) We're close to coming to Jesus time, quite frankly, where, I'm a state, we've got three different opportunities here, to move forward with the proposal, to drop down the proposal, or to table the proposal. But if I were out in the public right now, I might have the question in the back of my mind is, what's the mayor's opinion about this? And I will give you my opinion, and that I should not be giving you my opinion. And I'm not giving you an opinion for two reasons. First of all, I gave up that right when I moved to the center chair. I don't vote. That was a tough decision to make, to go from a voting position, opportunity for more conversation, discussion, than moving to this chair. I gave that up, and Jimmy left. The second thing is, I did not want my opinions to poison the well, if you will. I'm not, I think we have pretty strong council members here that have formulate their own opinions pretty strongly here, but I did not want that threat of poisoning the well for anybody's thinking. So for that reason, you will hear nothing more from me about that. So, action time. What is the will of the council at this point?
You have a motion on the side, so you can call it for a roll call.
Is Marshall ready?
Terrell?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Thank you, the resolution passes.[1730.12][1730.12](applause) Thank everybody for their thoughtful consideration of these topics, publicly speaking about them, and being respectful of speakers as much as possible while we went through this process. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our agenda if you'd like. Now we're going to be approving budgets. Come and work, and you'll enjoy the building.